Good evening and welcome to the April 17th meeting of the Des Moines City Plan and Zoning Commission. I will start by reading our rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation of the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Firstly, do we have any questions or comments from our last meeting? If not, we could approve those meeting minutes with a motion from the Commission. Thank you, Kayla. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. We will now move into the consent portion of the agenda. Item number one on the consent agenda is a request from Invest DSM, represented by Christopher Civitate, for a review and approval of a public hearing site plan and for type two design alternatives in accordance with city code for property located at 2220 East 13th Street to allow construction of a 456 square foot addition with a 5.25 foot rear yard setback, which is 24.75 feet less than the required 30-foot rear yard setback per city code. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this item removed from the consent agenda and discussed? Anyone on the Commission? Item number one will stay on consent. Item number two is a request from Richard Nelson for review and approval of a public hearing site plan and for type two design alternatives in accordance with city code for property located at 4516 Southwest 5th Street to allow construction of a second drive approach and driveway where only one driveway is allowed per residential lot. Would anyone in the audience tonight like this item pulled from consent and discussed? Anyone on the Commission? Item two will stay on consent. Item three is a request from Jerry's Homes, represented by Patrick Harrison, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan and for a type two design alternative in accordance with city code for property located at 2387 Emma Avenue to allow construction of a house type B in an N3A neighborhood district with an attached garage where the overhead door comprises 52% of the front facade width, where House B only allows the garage door to encompass 30% of the front facade width. Would anyone in the audience tonight like this item pulled from consent and discussed? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item three will also stay on consent. Item number four is a request from JDS Real Estate Investments, represented by Jeff Stanbrough, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for 108 3rd Street and for a type two design alternative in accordance with city code to allow residential units on the ground floor where not permitted for a downtown storefront building along a primary street in the DX2 district. Would anyone in the audience tonight like this item pulled from consent and discussed? Okay. Item number four will move to the public hearing. Thank you. Item number five is a request from Simmons Properties. Michael Simmons and Linda Simmons, represented by Jim Snell, for the following regarding a property located at 3018 East University Avenue. Determination as to whether the requested rezone is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to community mixed use within a neighborhood node. And rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to MX3 Mixed Use District to allow expansion of an existing drive-through restaurant. Would anyone in the audience this evening like this item pulled from consent and discuss this evening? Anyone on the Commission? Item five will stay on consent. Item six is a request from HRCNFS1, or I, represented by Caleb Smith, for review and approval of the preliminary plat- tealess condos on 3.21 acres of property in the vicinity of 1310 Murphy Street, which would create two lots for high-density residential development. Would anyone in the audience tonight like this item pulled from consent and discussed? Anyone on the Commission? Item number six will stay on consent. Item number seven, I thought I was, I thought I was going crazy there for a second, is a request from HRCNFS1, represented by Caleb Smith, for review and approval of a PUD Development Site Plan Tealess Condos Phase One on 1.05 acres located at 1310 Murphy Street, which would allow for the development of a multi-household residential building containing 32 units. Would anyone like this item pulled from consent tonight? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item seven will stay on consent. Item number eight, a request from Blaine Bruison for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for Beavardale I Parking Expansion on property at 4106 Sheridan Avenue and for the following type two design alternatives. A, allow parking in the front yard where permitted in the rear yard or limited side yard. B, allow 82.7% of impervious area and additional semi-pervious area where the maximum allowed is 75%. Would anyone like this item pulled from consent and discuss tonight? Anyone on the Commission? Thank you. Item number eight will stay on consent. Item number nine is a request from the District Developers, represented by Tim Ripma, regarding property located at 300 Southeast 4th Street for the following expedited type two design alternatives. A, waive the occupied space requirement along East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway frontage, where a minimum 30-foot depth of occupied space on all full-height floors of primary frontages is required. B, allow enclosed parking within the principal building along East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, where required to be behind occupied space. C, allow surface parking where prohibited. D, allow 44% transparency on the primary frontage ground story along East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, where 70% transparency between 2 feet and 10 feet is required. E, waive transparency requirements on visible basements along East MLK and Southeast 4th Street, where a minimum of 18% is required. F, allow 0% primary frontage coverage along East MLK and Southeast 4th, where a minimum 95% is required. And G, allow a building setback of 12.62 feet along East MLK and a building setback of 10.95 feet along Southeast 4th, where the required build-two zone is 0 to 5 feet. Would anyone in the audience like this item moved to the public hearing? Okay, item number nine will move to public hearing. And then, for item number 10, there is a possibility of moving this item to consent. I'll read this item first. It's a request from Iowa Pacific Processors, represented by Mike Everett, and the City of Des Moines, represented by Dwayne Myers, for the following regarding multiple parcels located in the vicinity of 2606 Sunset Road. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from business parking to industrial. And rezone the property from EX Mixed Use District to I1 Industrial District to allow expansion of an existing industrial use. And my understanding of this item is that city staff and the applicant have come to consensus on a compromise for the height of the building, and thus, there are no challenges from those points of view. Do you want to expand on that?
No, that's a great summary. Yeah, the updated staff report was emailed to the Commission this afternoon. Additional information is provided by the applicant. We found a middle ground between what was originally proposed with what we had originally recommended, so I think we're comfortable. Obviously, we'll want to see if anybody in the audience is here to speak on the item tonight, but we're comfortable.
Is anyone in the audience interested in hearing this item tonight? Okay, item number 10 will remain on the public hearing. So, on consent, that leaves items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Rick. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion passes. And we will start the public hearing with item number four, where Jasmine will present.
This is for the review and approval of a public hearing site plan for 108 3rd Street and the type two design alternative to allow residential units on the ground floor where not permitted per the downtown storefront building type. So this is located south of Court Avenue and west of 3rd Street. You see on the block over to the west is the Hy-Vee and their parking garage, and then to the south would be Tipsy Crow, and then some apartments to the east. The applicant is proposing to renovate and restore the existing building at 108 3rd Street. The building is a historic brick warehouse circa 1901, according to the Polk County Assessor webpage. They are looking to obtain some historical tax credits on this building and restore some of the openings here, restore all the window panes, and some work on the door. That's the existing off of Depot Street. Let me kind of show you guys what they're proposing to do. So these are some of the elevations that they are looking to restore some of those window openings to this building. The building's oriented with 3rd Street, the door on 3rd Street, sorry for the back and forth. The building's oriented with a narrow frontage along 3rd Street and has existing frustrations including those, that, sorry, has existing frustrations that don't mimic a new existing storefront. The applicant had proposed commercial offices, but due to financing, they're looking to see if they can do some residential units to offset the costs. So there are existing residential units on the ground floor in buildings adjacent, so over to, sorry, so again, over to the west, directly west of this property, there's some residential units on the ground floor. And then south of that building is, I believe, Confluence, which also has some residential units on the ground floor. And then just to the west of it, where you see all those numbers, is a condo building that also has some units on the ground floor. So the applicant is just here to request potentially having residential units on the ground floor. They are still seeing if they can make commercial work, but I am here for any other questions and so is the applicant.
Any questions for staff?
I have a quick question. Tell me about the other historic buildings in the downtown that have been converted into apartments with residential units on the first floor.
Jason might know that a little bit more than I would for historical buildings.
Yeah. Well, the first one that comes to mind is actually a one-story building, but a Hubble, I think I actually saw in the paper recently, sold it. It's over by Western Gateway to the south, was it 15th? That's all residential units, ground floor and second floor, I believe. It's a two-story building.
Ballpark lofts have residential in them?
I think ballpark lofts, I think those are all residential.
What about yonkers?
Well, no, they have, they have commercial on the-
On the first floor?
Yeah, it's that, or the indoor putt-putt business now. But, I mean, certainly Jasmine showed pictures of the building. This is, you know, very much traditional brick warehouse building. I don't think that this, you know, not having commercial activity in ground floor is a detriment to the area and it relates pretty well to the architecture of the building.
So it's maybe unusual, but it's not, I would think, to be quite appropriate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come up, state your name, address, and sign in. Is there a sign-in sheet?
There is not.
We will find a sign-in sheet. Please sign in when you're done. You've got up to 10 minutes.
Will do. Keith Wigan with CDA, 4121 Northwest Urbandale Drive, Urbandale, Iowa, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Jeff Stanbrough. Just a couple of things to point out. The request tonight is really more about providing some options for flexibility as he is working through how to redevelop this project. Really, it's about providing flexibility. With the historic restoration of the building, he's working through options for whether or not to renovate that ground floor as commercial versus residential, trying to work through what can be done with that ground floor and maintain that historic preservation. We had initially looked at commercial on the ground floor. Costs are coming back a little bit high, so we explored the residential use as well. Your question earlier, there was a question about what other buildings may have residential on the ground floor, and I may get this wrong, but my understanding is rocket transfer in Sealy, as well as ballyard lofts and water tower lofts as well. And I am not a historic preservation expert at all, but a couple of the concerns that I had also heard about, we had, I'm not sure how much we can do to that exterior facade, but we have a little bit of concern about storefronts on that building as well, because it's my understanding we need to maintain as much of that historical character of the facade of the building as possible. So I'm a little concerned about how do you get that storefront to work as well when you start talking about that commercial experience too. So those are the kinds of things that the design team is also looking into with that historic preservation in mind. So again, this request is about trying to maintain options and flexibility. I don't think the applicant is completely sold on one or the other at this point, but I'm hoping to have options. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Chris?
I'm sorry for not being an architect, but when you say the storefront, what do you mean?
Well, I, commercial entries, commercial storefronts. My understanding is that there are certain types of, if we were to do commercial on the ground floor, there might be certain storefront design standards that would come along with that, and I think Jasmine might be able to speak to that maybe a little more specifically, but there might be certain design standards for commercial at the ground level as well. But I don't know if that, if the historic preservation standards would allow us to meet those design standards, but I think those are some of the things that we're trying to understand as well.
Storefront's a type of aluminum frame glazing system.
Gotcha, okay.
That's all that means.
Okay, so for right now, though, if it's residential, we don't have to put in storefronts or we do? Is it a type of window that's required?
No, no, actually, there's provisions in the code that allow, like, tax credit, historic review requirements to intervene, so we don't need to worry about that. I think that the point is, is that the architecture of this building, it's not going to feel as unusual as like if this was a traditional storefront to maybe have an apartment on the front of it. I think we were just trying to build the case that with the setting of the area and factoring in the historic architecture, this isn't a big deal from our perspective. And I just thought the Brown Camp Loft in Tones, just down the street from this, is, you know, all residential. I can't believe I blanked out on those, so.
My sense would be if you're going for the historic preservation tax credits, what I mean, I would certainly urge you to do, you're going to have to comply with anything that would be, I'm thinking of these doors here on the left. I assume those are, since it's a warehouse, I assume those are dock doors for trucks and so forth.
They are.
So you'll, you know, you'll have to address that.
Correct.
I think this is a great idea, and I urge you to both to continue with it and do the, you know, the tax credits, but the guidelines are going to be great for the City of Des Moines when you follow them.
Yeah, we're very excited about the project.
Just a quick question. I think I know the answer, but those, to the south, those arched openings, the bottom sill, that's maybe a foot or two, so is the slab a foot or two above grade inside? So, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure.
Okay, so I mean, that's the way it appears, so it's not like that unit is right down at the ground level. It appears to be a foot or so up above potentially, so.
Could be correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Please come up, state your name, address. We will follow up with the sign-in sheet. There it is. And you have up to five minutes.
Do you want my name on here? Is that piercing?
Yes.
You can do that after you speak, though.
Okay. My name's Mary Ann Rector. I live at 1194th, which is the gray building right, right behind here. So my condo is looking at the back window, so I don't know if we can go back a slide to see, oops. So my condo is where all those numbers are, right on the end there. I'm on the very end, so we just have a little ballpark between us and that building.
Can you speak closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, so I live just right across from the back of the building, and I just really had questions about, I mean, I'd love to see the building used rather than empty. I think that's definitely a great idea. I wanted to know how many units they were planning to put in, and my other concerns were parking and then the garbage pickup, because we have issues with garbage in that neighborhood. We have little sheds where our trash is, and there being people in them all the time, getting in there and trying to live there or start them on fire. So those were the questions that I had to, would like to see addressed, and I think other than that, I support it.
Thank you. The applicant will have an opportunity to address those here shortly. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone neutral or opposed? Okay, applicant, you do have five minutes for rebuttal. There are questions about the number of units, parking, and garbage pickup.
Keith Wigan with CDA. The last proposal, there were 36 units proposed. I don't know that that's necessarily the final number. I think it may depend on the outcome of not only tonight's decision, but as we continue to work through final design on the project, but the last proposal was 36 units. There is parking on the north side of the building, as well as on-street parking in the vicinity. We are proposing a dumpster enclosure in the alley on the south side of the building, which, if you had a photo up earlier of one of the, one of the loading docks, so we are proposing a screened-in dumpster enclosure adjacent to, yeah, so that dumpster that you see there would actually become a, there would be an enclosure there that would screen that and hide that, so it wouldn't be seen from either direction.
Thank you. Okay, I will now close the public hearing and open it up for discussion from the Commission and motions.
I move stand.
Thank you, Francis. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you. We will next move to-
Chair, can we just notate, there is a one abstain from that, just on the record? I just wanted to notate, there's one abstain from a vote on that item, so, thank you.
Okay, next will be item number nine, and Jasmine will also present this item.
So the District Developers LLC is requesting some expedited type two design alternatives, and I'll kind of go through that in my presentation. So the applicant is proposing to construct new residential cooperative apartment building within the Market District. This is actually going to be on the south side of the lot that you see here. It is located within the Market District Large-Scale Development Plan, north of East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and west of Southeast 4th Street. They are proposing a six-story building with 70 residential units and one guest suite with enclosed parking in the basement and the first level. So here are some pictures. This is looking southbound on Southeast 4th Street. This is looking westbound, looking northbound, looking northeast, northwestbound, sorry. And then this is on the northeast corner, looking south, sorry, northwest corner, looking So to kind of talk through what they are requesting, occupied space, the design alternatives A and B, this is for occupied space along southeast, sorry, along, let me get to, there we go. The building provides occupied space along Southeast 4th Street, and they are requesting a waiver for occupied space along East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. They currently propose enclosed parking along East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. So this is the request for A and B, and then I'll, I'll go through each waiver and then I'll stand for questions on those. Surface parking is being requested. They are currently proposing a one-per-one, as in, for each bedroom, they're proposing a parking space and then 17 additional guest parking. So those are the 27 parking stalls that you see there that are surface parking. And then for alternatives D and E in regard to transparency, you have, they meet transparency requirements on the ground floor on Southeast 4th Street. They are requesting a waiver for the transparency on East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, and then in addition to that, they are raised, their ground floor is raised above four feet, so that would require a visible basement. 18% is required for the visible basement for transparency, so they're requesting a waiver for that as well. And then the last two waivers, F and G, these are waivers- And then the last two waivers, F and G, these are waivers for the build-to-zone. They're currently set back ten point nine feet from Southeast Fourth Street, and then twelve point six-two feet from East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, where they are required to be within zero to five feet. So I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so I'm just going to open it up to questions if you guys have any.
So what is the actual, considered the front of the building? Is part of it that the front of the building is considered Third versus Fourth Street?
The frontage is actually Southeast Fourth Street, so they have two frontages, they'll have it off of East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway and then Fourth Street, so those are their primary. Their third street kind of acts as their, their back access, it's not the frontage. Southeast Fourth Street would be their frontage, as well as Martin Luther.
Then I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused on which one we're on. Aren't they asking for a waiver of a parking lot in the front, where it should be side and back, or am I got that wrong? I'm sorry.
No, sorry. Okay, so for surface parking, they're requesting a waiver for the surface parking, so that's the twenty-seven spots. The parking off of East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, it's required to be behind occupied space, so the enclosed parking that they're proposing is required to be behind occupied space, but because they're not providing that occupied space, the thirty feet along East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, that's
Oh.
two and one.
Yeah, so the first floor of the building includes structured parking, so that first floor along MLK is parking stalls, you just can't see it because there's a screen wall and some glazing above. So that's where a lot of, some of the relief is driven by that, and then obviously the surface parking, and then a lot of the other relief is driven by how they articulated the building on the east facade, you know, the, it is out of the build-to-zone from a technical perspective, but they have these upper balconies that hang out, and then there's the elevated patio, so in spirit, they're really, we felt complying, but by code definition, they are not.
So the problem with the surface parking lot is just because it's not?
Not allowed, and, yeah.
Not allowed in this district?
Yes.
Okay.
And so just, then also, you kind of flip through these a little bit quick, that there's actually more parking in the basement, and so the whole discussion about the basement level transparency is because that basement level comes out of the ground to a certain degree, we feel that there's no need to add transparency for that, they're actually using that for part of their patio function, so it's just, it's kind of incorporated into the building, but that's, that's where that is coming from.
You mentioned one-to-one parking ratio for bedrooms to stalls, is that, how does that compare to what is required by code?
Right, so they are proposing for bedroom sizes, one-for-one plus the seventeen. For our requirements, for a normal apartment building, it would be one, one for every dwelling unit, for elderly housing, it's zero point five per, zero point five.
And what's, I mean, I can ask the, I can ask the applicant too, I assume there's a mix of two-bedroom, one-bedroom studio?
Yes, there, I'd be, I believe it's one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and then there's a mix between one to one and a half, or one and one for baths, and then the two bedrooms go up to two, two, two bed, two bath.
Thank you. What other questions do we have for staff?
What do you, whoops, sorry. So you say one-to-one plus seventeens, so what's the actual aggregate ratio?
That's what they're proposing for the ratio, one, one parking space per bedroom within their development, and then seventeen extra parking spaces.
We're just trying to share with you their justification for the number of stalls they have, we, so that's why we're providing that information. Our, you know, code, actually in the downtown, we have no minimum requirement, but we would typically assign parking based off of a dwelling unit, we were just trying to show that, that that's the, from their market perspective, that's what they're trying to accomplish is a, a one, one stall per bedroom, and then seventeen guest parking spaces.
Okay, so it's eighty-seven stalls, or what's there for seventy units? Is that?
One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven.
Maybe, yeah, let the applicant come on.
Well, I have a question for staff. What is the rationale behind supporting more than one parking lot, parking spot per unit in the district where we're not expecting to have any parking? Or not expected to have any parking, expected to provide more leniency towards not having parking?
Sure. The, I think, there's a couple, in the staff report, we elaborated on this, but the, the Market District is at the periphery of downtown and kind of, it's an urban but somewhat transitional. There's, if you look at the Large-Scale Development Plan for the Market District, it actually contemplated some surface parking lots within blocks. So if this was the core of the East Village or the core of the downtown, we wouldn't be supporting a surface parking lot, and for this particular use, you know, with these circumstances, but given where it's at, we're comfortable with supporting, especially knowing that the vision of the Market District plan anticipated some surface parking. I think the other thing that we had in the discussions of the lot was that they're showing amenity space on the ground floor facing the street, but it is designed in a manner that, you know, it could be commercial space in the future, and then the outdoor parking stalls would conserve that function to support that, should that transition happen. I know they're showing graphically what could happen on the property to the north, but that, that's just a concept, today, all we're looking at is this, and from our perspective, you know, this was a relatively small surface lot tucked in back behind the building. They have indoor bike parking, they have predominantly indoor parking. That, that's what kind of led us to our position.
I know we're not talking about the property to the north, but since the concept was provided, has there been discussions about shared parking between those two lots?
I would ask the applicant on that, I believe they provided an answer, but I would ask the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in when you're done, you have up to ten minutes.
Thank you. Tim Ripma with the District Developers, I'm also here with Ben Landhauser with Lifestyles. Just to reiterate on the Market District, this has been in the making for ten years, if you think up and down, Martin Luther King, there is a lot of parking structures, or parking lots, surface parking lots. For example, I'm just finishing up the Carpenter Paper Building that has a surface lot in front of it, so just for clarity, we're really excited about this, this is the first vertical building going up in the Market District. Something that, just to reiterate or confirm, this is a condo-for-sale product, it is not an apartment-for-rent. So for example, my hu, my wife and I someday might live in this building, so we have two cars, and then we might have children visit us. So think through that rationale, it's also across the street from a nine-and-a-half-acre park. So two cars in a one-bedroom apartment, or one-bedroom condo-for-sale could pull down, then visitors have private parking so they could get in to visit us. So that's the seventeen-stall parking on-site, and then tucked under two-for-one, so it's not a typical apartment situation. Thank you. Ben, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, Ben Landhauser, Lifestyle Communities. We're at 3106 Ingersoll Avenue. Ben, before you, Ben, several months ago, we have a cooperative in pre-sale along Ingersoll Avenue, this is similar to what Tim Ripma was explaining, this is also proposed as more of a condo-esque position as a cooperative, so it's a for-sale product. A lot of the things that Tim just explained hold true, even though thinking about it as a cooperative, if you have questions about that cooperative model, I'm happy to talk through it. I understand a lot of the discussions focused on parking, so I'll kind of walk through with a little bit more detail why we've made the proposal that's before you tonight. Typically, we deal with a cooperative that is catered towards fifty-five-plus, so it's an owner, an age-qualified community, at least if you travel in a pair, one of the two individuals needs to be fifty-five or older. We deal a lot with people that are downsizing, remaining in place, the example that Tim gave is spot-on, we don't rationalize kind of parking ratios based on a individual car or vehicle per unit, we more try to anticipate, we'll have a blend, we'll have some single individuals, and we'll also have people that are couples. So we typically try to target about one and a half to one parking spaces per unit, just so we have some flexibility in catering to the people that do come with two vehicles per unit. It's worked out really favorably, particularly in more inner-city, urban environments such as this. We're right now with seventy-four parking spaces in the lower garage level and twenty-six within kind of the upper, kind of at-grade level garage facing East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, we're right about one point four and a hair above that ratio per unit. The twenty-seven parking stalls, it makes a lot of sense for us, we typically can live with less, but I'll tell you why we proposed the twenty-seven. This particular part of the block, Lot Six in the Market District, along Southeast Third Street, there's a loading dock area, there's no other on-street parking provided there, and while there is some on-street parking that could accommodate guests and visitors along Southeast Fourth, as was noted, we're contemplating a mixed-use project to the north of this that we're working on finalizing, but trying to leave as much of that on-street parking to support planned future commercial activities that would be on any side of Southeast Fourth, and it just tends to work better, being an owner-occupied property, to know that your guests and visitors are within the confines of the property that you own and control, much similar to a single-family or townhome unit, you just, there's much more understanding when we're going out to the market saying, here's a great opportunity to buy, it'd be more similar to a townhome that just happens to live from an individual unit basis on a single floor. We do have one-bedroom units, up to two-bedroom, and a den unit, so a thousand square feet to almost nineteen hundred square feet. Again, it's for the buyer that has wanted to live in downtown Des Moines, maybe already lives in downtown Des Moines, but they're looking at doing other things. We have a lot of people that are snowbirds heading south for the winter, so we're catering to that market. Similarly, on First Floor, and I'm intentionally not flipping through all the slides that I prepared for you, but we can head back to it, high amenity spaces that are finished out, fit and finish feels very commercial. So we do things like coffee bars that feel like it's their own Starbucks. We have fitness studios, wellness areas that are kind of the yoga plus kind of a anytime fitness or a small lifetime. Our social is typically more of a game room, so we'll have kind of pool table, tabletop games, those kinds of things, there's a covered outdoor patio space right on the north side of the building here, that you can see in this lower of the two pictures here. Again, it's going to feel like it could be converted someday if the cooperative elects to like, we just don't have use for the space on a routine basis, a restaurant could easily fold into here, and they've got outdoor dining space right kind of in-between a private but accessible space between Four, Southeast Fourth and Southeast Third. The upper levels of, sorry, there's more examples of kind of fit and finish of what we're doing for our great room spaces, accommodates kind of a full kitchen, so people that are downsizing, they don't have to take the whole family up for holiday parties, birthday parties, just general hosting, you're doing wine night, you can basically have full run of a full-service kitchen that you'd kind of prepare for yourself. Again, long-term, if that was to be something the cooperative elect to lease out, it's a full-service kitchen that they could basically have a restaurant fold in with a mix of dining throughout that space. And then residentially on the upper floors of the building, again, trying to take on the, the vision that was put together over the past decade, as Tim mentioned, for the Market District, that we envision this being a very high-caliber building, really representative kind of what's been long planned here, great views of the river, we love the proximity to the regional Two Rivers Park that's being completed as we speak across the street. A lot of this really kind of speaks our language of being in a very walkable, amenity-rich neighborhood, and we realize we're on the forefront of kind of what the district will become when it's kind of grown up, so to speak, but we love everything about that. We have additional amenity spaces in our building, we've got a secured bike storage room at-grade, so people can come and go and kind of take the trails up and down the river. We also have additional storage in the, in the lower-level garage, as well as a simulator, a maker space, so we're really kind of putting everything together that replaces what people had to do in multiple floors of the home they're leaving, including a garage, all-in-one footprint. High activity, again, because we're dealing with more of the empty nester-plus crowd, this is the group that's going to be patronizing more routinely any restaurants or other service industries that are in walking distance or, you know, with a one, two-minute drive from this site, so very excited about the project, happy to answer any questions about our cooperative model, but would put it back to the commission. If there's anything else, I can fill in the blanks on.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I'll, I'll just say something, I'm not, I don't have a question, but I live in the East Village in a townhouse, and parking is an issue, so I am glad you have extra spots, because we sometimes don't have spots for a babysitter, or a pest control, or a house cleaner, they have to park really far away, so I think it's really nice that you've thought of that, actually.
Could we look at the, may I, I'd like to ask a question, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Could we look at one of the early elevation drawings that, that we, the city
That staff was looking at? I think I have a...
No, the very earliest one, yeah, this one.
Okay.
I, this gives me a chance to, to vent, because this looked like a black building, and, you know, black is a trendy, and I know we don't have anything to do with color here, but I want to use this as a pulpit to...
Sure, yeah, give it to me.
When, when Heather Manor was painted black, it looks like a black column on the blue sky, and personally, I find that unappealing. I know black is a, you know, is a, you know, popular color and so forth and so on, this kind of was a disappointment, however. Yes, let's do the however, this is the however, and this is much different and much better. I'm just giving this spiel to express my dislike with black on buildings, thank you.
Thank you, Will, noted.
I think black buildings look sick.
Like good or bad sick?
Good sick.
Okay, just making sure I understood.
We'll take the constructive criticism, it's totally fine.
Are we sure there isn't an energy efficiency benefit to the black?
Could be on one in heat.
In the winter, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone neutral? Please state your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher, and I live downtown in a hundred-year-old building in an apartment, and I do not own a car. Seven Type II exceptions on the consent agenda. I, I'm sorry, I had to pull that off. When I moved here five years ago, these meetings were online, I started to attend so I could understand how the bill, how the city worked, how the city was put together, I would hop on my bike when I got the agenda, and I would ride around to the different places to understand the neighborhoods and how it all fit together, I still do that, actually. But the Market District was one of those master plans, right? It taught me the word view shed, because we even had to look from in Principal Park to make sure these new buildings were not going to block our view of the Capitol. It was sexy, it was going to be walkable, bikable, sexy, the new place... The new place, everybody would want to live. It was really exciting. Then the city invested millions, right, in putting in the streets, the red off-street bike lanes, bioswells. Fantastic. And then, we waited a really long time, and nothing got built. And here's the first thing, and that ain't it. Can you take that down? Because that's not it. Right? Is that your proposal? That's not the proposal. Oh. We waited a really long time, and I was hoping that we were waiting for something really sexy, transformative, design-like, amazing. Instead, we've got something that's just next to a really fantastic downtown park of green space we desperately need, and we're going to put parking lots across from it, right? That, when you look east from the park, you see a bunch of concrete. Surface lots aren't allowed. We're going to put in two of them, right? And we're going to have 70 units, we're going to have 127 parking spots. 127. As Jason mentioned, if it's an elderly building, I believe was his word, it's, it's not one-to-one, it's half. So there should be 35 parking spaces. There's 127. That's more than, more than more. It's heck of a lot. A lot, a lot. And parking is expensive to build. I would think these guys, these guys know that. It's expensive. It's not going to generate you any money. It's expensive. And now you're going to have this surface lot where all these people are going to be at this fantastic park, and you're going to keep them out of your lot somehow, right? You're going to have Kroto come in and tow them if they have them to park there. But you're facilitating that, right? It's right next to the park. Instead of all this parking, the developer should be providing DART unlimited access passes, right? We should be encouraging people in this walkable, bikable downtown community to walk, bike, and ride the bus, not have three cars, two cars, one for every bedroom. That's a standard I, I'm sure is not in our code, but it's interesting to me that that's the definition of why we want to use it, because if you have more bedrooms, you're going to own more cars. This is downtown. This is the flag being planted in this new district. We shouldn't put in this. This is a fortress on stilts. Have you ever walked under an underpass, like, near the Botanical Garden, headed to the Asian Garden? It's dark, right? It's kind of scary, a little bit. That's what that is under there. Why? That's not walkable and bikable. That's underneath darkness. You can see how dark it is just from the rendering. This isn't the sexiness that we were promised and that we should get. This is such an opportunity for our city. Please, I urge you to push back, not only on the parking, but the way that the First Floor is not activated, is not walkable, is not a way we should be encouraging new development to be in this district that is going to be desirable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak neutrally on this topic? Anyone opposed? Okay, applicant, you have five minutes for rebuttal, if you would like it.
Hello, board again. Tim Rittma again. Just a couple of clarifying points I wanted to make. For, for the record, the developer has built the million dollars of roads and bioswells, not the city of Des Moines. So just wanted to point that out. The park across the street has a surface parking lot in it for visitors, so that is addressed. In the last 10 years, we would love to have gotten more done, but we had COVID that took us out of commission for five years, and hyperinflation. So, we've been working through it. It has not been fun carrying the project, but we've gotten through it. Also, I wanted to mention something that is dear to my heart but does not work: DART passes. I've redeveloped the Reagan House on 28th and Grand and the Tree House. I gave everyone a DART pass, 150 apartments. We had three riders. Three riders. So, the DART pass does not work. So, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
No rebuttal on my end, just additional context for the commission, based on some of the comments that were shared. For this market, particular to our cooperative buyers, what we're seeing on Ingersoll Avenue right now, I anticipate, will be similar here. We have a ton of interest of people that are buying, have reserved spaces there, that are moving back to Des Moines after leaving for the western suburbs, northern suburbs, elsewhere, because they've raised their kids and they're looking for a place to come back. I anticipate that a lot of the people are still comfortable having access to multiple avenues of parking, particularly so their family can come visit, friends and so forth as well, but just, if you weren't aware of that, that's the market that we're living in actively right now, is a lot of people coming back, because there are opportunities of new construction like this in the marketplace where it hasn't previously existed.
Is there a question?
I would you have a question coming toward you? Please.
So as far as the amount of street parking accessible within a reasonable walk from this building, because given where you are on 4th, if you just cross MLK, how much street parking is available? How many streets are there, they're available?
Really, the majority of street parking that's good proximate parking is on 4th, Southeast 4th Street, both sides of Southeast 4th Street. Say there's roughly 20, if you just went linearly on kind of what that
What do you consider proximate?
Just within a reasonable kind of convenience walk.
What's reasonable? Like, how far
A block, block and a half.
Okay, so you're saying, within a block and a half. So you're just saying, hey, for just a block and a half. I guess I'm curious about this, because we see this in Sherman Hill all the time, where it's like, oh, there's no parking in Sherman Hill. You want to live in like a New York-ish type of neighborhood, well, you know, I mean, I lived in Berkeley, I mean, five or six blocks is your radius you go, right? We're here, why not that standard? Why do we need a suburban reach for parking? And we're saying, why is reasonable a block?
And I apologize, I'm not trying to say you should curtail any consideration of our project to meet 100% the suburban market, but as I mentioned earlier, I do think that it would be best served for the overall Market District, for all of that on-street parking to be capacity to support retail and business surface uses that will likely happen adjacent to, potentially on the north, because we're planning through that building right now, as well as things that are being contemplated on surrounding blocks within the Market District. It's not so much that we couldn't remove the 27 surface parking lot spaces that are there if we could understand that the same capacity within, again, maybe our definitions of reasonable proximity is different, but whatever that might be, as soon as this is fully built out, those spaces are harder to come by for someone that's just coming to see mom and dad or their friend.
So I guess the question being, right, so I mean, because the project that you've hypothesized, if that's a word, to the north, right? Seems like that's a big old parking lot to the middle of an L, right?
Yeah, we're still working through that. That was just kind of an initial pass that we, we know we need architecturally building on frontage to both Elm and Southeast 4th, so that's just where we've started to contemplate.
Yeah, but I guess I wonder, in this case, right, is there a middle ground of saying, do we really need the 27 on the surface? Is it something where that can be reserved until there is actual evidence of need? Because I do think I agree, you know, your position and Carol seem to be very, very far apart, and I know Carol, you know, Carol and myself are probably seen as weirdos from time to time, but I would say if we're talking about, hey, we have an urban thing, and now we're talking about near, still needs to be a block, that seems to be unreasonable. I think if we're saying, we now need to count the number of spaces relative to a more urban expectation, so if we count the number of spaces within a five-block radius, I think now you have a lot more. Because I mean, south of, south of MLK is now within play.
I would say that there's, this is a 40-acre redevelopment. There's not enough street parking to support what we are going to do, especially with the nine-and-a-half-acre park. This is the first building. There's going to be approximately 3,000 units built down here. This is the first 70, so we can't street park the entire neighborhood. It's the same problem the East Village has. The retail tenants get upset when you park in front of Luca all day because you live upstairs. For example, I've gone through that.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sure you've talked to my brother about this for years. I'm not arguing that, right? But I think his other point was, if you just go a little north, we also have, within a reasonable walk, more of the access we're not actually considering, so I think
Southeast 4th Street's in right now. This is the first building, but when you build a building across the street, and you build a hotel, and you build an office building, think through that, there's going to be a lot more street activity.
If we're talking about think-through it, what I'm saying, think-through is expand your radius. Think through that, right?
I understand. I mean, this is a 40-acre development. You get into
I get math, man.
You get into, you get into parking already. I mean, this abuts to East Court Avenue, which, you know, and these are all going to be metered parking spots.
I understand math, and I understand the pressures here, and I understand that piece, but I'm also hearing that the calculations are based off of one block reasonable, right? Fine. I'm saying, if you expand your block radius, now what are we at? You may still be right. Not arguing that you may still be right. I'm arguing that we haven't done the math. Is that fair or no?
Understood.
Sweet.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions, please.
I just want to state a point. As Carol mentioned, if this is the first development that's going into the Market District, there are a couple in the pipeline that we have reviewed a couple of meetings ago. They have more units, and they don't have as much parking as this one. I think being the, at the forefront of development, it brings a lot of attention, rightfully so, and I think we also set the trend for future development. So, if we're going to approve this, I'm not, I'm not against the project, I'm against the parking lot, and setting that standard is going to make any other development come in front of us have the same amount of parking or more when it's technically not allowed. The city's investing TIF dollars in a garage that's going four blocks away from here. That was not brought up. That's four blocks away from here. Taxpayer dollars, investing in another garage structure. I will remind all of us that Des Moines has nine parking spots per person, and we keep adding to that count. This district has been set up with the infrastructure to be as multimodal as we've ever had in the city. So this is just my opinion. I will be in support of the project, because of the housing, all for housing is great, but I will be voting against the parking lot allowance.
As in, are you saying that if we had a motion that was without the surface parking lot approval, and maybe someday you leave it and someone asks for it again, that's a middle ground that works to say, hey, the project's fine, but the surface lot is not? Does that hit your concern, or am I?
I'm just one voice, but yes, I, I am in support of the project. I am in support of all the other exceptions that are being requested. It's just, we have a district where surface parking lot is not allowed, and then we're making all these exceptions already to that district. So if, if that's going to be the trend moving forward, then we need to direct our staff to change that requirement. Because if, if we're not requiring developers to do this, and the market is somehow telling them to do it, then why do we even have it if we're going to just exempt it every time they come in front of us?
I think that's a great thought. I think that the, I like the building, and it's a good-looking building. I think the site plan makes a lot of sense. As you pointed out, structured parking is very expensive. In this case, because it's a for-sale product, they are going to make money off of it. It's going to be part of the sale price, and you'll purchase parking stalls when you purchase your home. But leaving a surface lot makes a lot of sense to me when you think about Amazon deliveries, about people coming in to do work, or visit, or other things, other reasons why people would visit the building. It's not that large relative to the building, and it, they did, I think they did a great job of site-planning it to hide it in the inner courtyard. The landscaping that they've got in the renderings looks really nice. I, I just think that your observation about the zoning maybe being a little bit beyond the market is on point, and so I'm going to support all of the, the design alternatives that have been proposed, because I, I think that they've done a really good job of kind of navigating the ordinance, finding the, the spots that they don't agree with, and finding a good negotiated solution, which is probably why the staff supported it.
I agree with you, Andy. That was very eloquent and well said.
I'll move staff. Any discussion on that motion?
Staff with no modification, so just as it is, move staff.
All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I will be, a no on C, item C.
I didn't know, it could be selective, so I'm opposed.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item 10. Sriyoshi will present this item.
Madam Chair, Sriyoshi Chakrabarti, Planning Staff. Item 10 is for a property in the vicinity of 2606 Sunset Road. The applicant, Iowa Pacific Processors, is requesting rezoning and a land use plan amendment. The rezoning request is to change the zoning classification from EX, Mixed Use District, to I-1 Industrial District, and to change the land use classification from Business Park to Industrial. This is the subject property. It's located on Sunset Road. It's right where Sunset Road deadens into Southwest 28th Street, adjoining the Des Moines Waterworks Park, which is immediately to the, to the west of the subject site. The area is zoned EX, Mixed Use District, which is a Business Park, light-industrial-type district. Most of the uses in the vicinity are warehousing, business, and light industrial. There's also recreation and other open-space-type amenities to the west, which is part of the larger Des Moines Waterworks Park system. This is the area that is to be rezoned. It includes several parcels, as you can see highlighted here, includes parcels that belong both to the applicant as well as City of Des Moines. Some photographs, you are looking at the subject property, which currently includes a meat-processing building, which is standing right here. It's about two-and-a-half stories tall, and there is a gravel parking lot adjoining this, some off-street paved parking to the north of the building as well. This is, looking at the area where the applicant is proposing to expand the existing use. So, here, if you can follow my cursor, is the existing meat-processing plan. The applicant is proposing to add a cold-storage building, which would go roughly where you can see the green grass and the existing gravel surface. And there is also some associated site improvements that I'll talk about here in a few minutes. This is looking, looking east on Sunset Road, kind of shows you the character of the area. It's primarily one-story to two-story warehouse, office-type buildings. This is looking to the west, towards the Waterworks Park. This is a levy-protected This is a levee-protected area and you can see here the levee. It's slightly at a slightly higher elevation than where the subject property is, which sits at a slightly lower level in the levee-protected zone. The area is also adjoining parkland. So, just to the south of the subject property, previously, right-of-way had been reserved for the future southwest connector, which did not happen. But that reserve right-of-way was then turned into parkland area. It includes, currently includes a trail segment that's part of the Greater Des Moines Regional Trail System, connects the Great Western Trail to the Bill Riley Trail. And the subject property is just beyond this tree buffer that you can see right here. So, there's a fairly robust tree and tree canopy that runs just to the south of the subject property, which is part of the City of Des Moines parkland area. I'm going to show you a few renderings and layout from a previous site plan that was approved. So, in your staff report, you may have seen some historical context of what happened. And this is a previously-approved site plan that was approved but expired. But the layout that is being proposed right now is fairly similar to what was approved earlier. So, this is the existing building. The new building addition is right here. There is an extra fire slash circulation access that's needed, which is why there is a driveway that loops around all the way to the south of the property and back here to the parking lot. The driveway actually sits on a 25-foot easement through the parkland that I was just talking about. And I also have some elevation pictures. Keep in mind that this was from the site plan that expired and currently the building height and elevation information is something that we do not have. That is something that will be looked at during the site plan process. But I just wanted to share this to give you a context of what this building addition could potentially look like. It will be a lot taller than what's being shown in this elevation. And this is a rendering of what is being proposed. Again, as I mentioned, we don't have elevation drawings, but this gives you an idea of the scale and height of the building addition. The previous site plan approved a height of 75 feet. As we understand, the height proposal has since changed. It is now expected to be roughly 110-foot tall. And this is a rendering just to give you an idea of the scale of what we are looking at with this cold storage facility that's going to go right next to the processing plan.
Sri Oshie, just you said 110 feet, but they've actually lowered...
Yes, yes. I was... Thank you. I was going to get to that in just a second. So, as Jason mentioned before I go to the staff recommendation and some of the things that transpired over the last few days, I wanted to touch on a few different things again. So, just to refresh your memory with the history of this. So, this is a... This exists in an area that was zoned EX when the citywide rezoning occurred. This area was envisioned to be a business park-type area with warehousing, light industrial, office-type uses. This is a use that existed and was allowed under the old code, which was the M1 light industrial district. However, when the citywide rezoning occurred to EX district, this became a legal non-conforming use. Because the applicant is expanding in terms of adding the new cold storage building and doing site improvements and parking lot, this necessitates the rezoning to the I-1 district. So, that's what we are doing right now. The applicant, under the old code, had submitted a site plan, which had been approved. However, that site plan was never implemented and the development didn't proceed. Now, they're back with a new proposal. The new proposal is largely similar to the site plan that was approved. The only big difference is the height of the cold storage building, which went from 75 feet up to 110 feet. Given the character of the area and some of the site context information that I had provided in the staff report, staff's initial determination was that 110 feet did not fit the character of the area. It was not something that staff would be supportive of. There is also some information that was provided to you. I'm not going to go into the calculations of the height, but staff decided that for a variety of reasons in terms of the height allowed in EX district and the height that can be allowed in an I-1 and the ability to provide type 1 design alternative, all of those factors helped staff make the determination that the maximum height that we would be supportive of was 75 feet. So, the initial staff recommendation that you saw, that came, that was provided to you, was limited the maximum height of the cold storage building to 75 feet. However, following that, the applicant provided us some additional information. One of the things that was pointed out to us was that with the initial site plan that was approved earlier in 2019, there was underground storage of 18 feet that had been proposed. However, in 2020, it was determined that the subject site is part of an EPA Superfund site, so it's environmentally sensitive. And therefore, they have made the determination that there would not be any underground storage for the safety of the food products that be stored, that all of that would be above ground. And so, therefore, when staff considered that, we think that it's appropriate to add that 18 feet that they're losing as a result of not being able to store underground to add it to the 75 feet. And therefore, we came up with the new height of 93 feet, which we would be supportive of. And so, therefore, the new staff recommendation, as you will see here highlighted, is that any future building or building addition shall not exceed 93 feet in height. So, I just wanted to clarify that. That's why we issued a revised staff report. Other than that, staff has a few other conditions as well, which limits the types of uses that are allowed as permitted and limited in the EX district and a processing and cold storage business. And then, any outdoor storage shall be accessory to the approved use and shall be screened to the satisfaction of the planning and urban design administrator and everything, all future construction development shall comply with Chapter 135. So, that's staff's recommendation. And the applicant did provide us some information about a neighborhood meeting that they held. It looks like they did not have any attendees that came to the meeting. Here's a summary of what was provided to the neighbors. We also did not receive any comment cards or communication from the adjoining neighbors that had been notified of this rezoning action. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions, Chris?
Looks like the city of Des Moines is delinquent in their card return rate, since you get a lot of spots. But was that Jason, your card?
I dropped the ball. Probably sitting on my desk.
Oh, okay. So, if I'm understanding correctly, so operationally, you're asking this to be operationally in EX, but structurally in I? So, the structural requirements are equivalent with an I-1, but operationally, it's going to be an EX, is what's proposed?
Operationally, it would be EX plus this particular use of the meat processing plus cold storage. Just like that would be the use.
And then, but so the, for design approval and those sort of items, so all of your transparency, other pieces like that, that'd all be restricted by what's allowed in I-1 then?
That would be, yes. That would follow I-1 design regulations, yes.
And as far as height, we're basically saying we went from, they asked for a seven-story building. We said, nah, we need a five. Instead, we're going, we're ending up with a six-story building. Is that the short summary of it? So, it'll be like the equivalent of a six-story tall building, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a fair way to describe it, yeah.
And if we didn't put the restriction on, they'd have access to up to a seven-story building in the I-1? Or what would be the limit in the I-1?
In I-1, they can go up to either five stories or 75 feet. However, staff has the ability to give them 50% over that through a type 1 design alternative, which could put them as high as 112 feet.
We wanted to have the height discussion upfront. We didn't want to wait and it be a surprise whether it's something that they would ask for a type 1 from us or if we denied it and it came before you. We would rather just have it upfront. So, that's why we brought it up now. Normally, we wouldn't bring that sort of thing up at zoning.
Gotcha. Okay. So, there would be another... So, if we just said, hey, it's an I-1 with no restriction on the height, it could come back and the height could be restricted at the later stage when it comes back? So, really, the height piece isn't necessary now? But, or is it?
Well, it's... It's better for us if, to have this discussion with you, because what they're proposing actually would fall in the administrative, like 110, we actually could approve administratively. But we had concerns about that. And we thought, you know, why not? We're already in front of you. We're going to be in front of council. Why not have this discussion upfront with you all, with the applicant? Just get that part of it figured out. That way, when we know, when the site plan comes in and the buildings, that we're all on the same page. We don't have to have this discussion later. There's no, nobody's like, well, why didn't you tell me that before? You know? We just wanted to be upfront.
Well, no, I aggressively agree with that. Aggressively support that. Obviously, I've been a jerk from time to time when we don't do that. So, aggressively agree with that piece. I guess I'm just sort of curious, like, why height restrict it? What is it that we're looking to get by just dropping off 15 feet?
I talked a little bit about the character of the area. So, the area is largely EX. It's been zoned EX. So, it's been envisioned as a business park-type area where if you look at the height regulations for EX, it would be, the maximum would be three stories. And so, this is going much higher than that. So, even though we are rezoning this particular subject property to allow a legal non-conforming use, we want it to fit the character of the area, which is largely an EX, which is why staff is not supportive of that really, really tall height.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, the production of meat processing, it sounds like it's the production use currently that's non-conforming?
Yes. So, it is a, it falls under a fabrication and production general use category, which is not allowed in the EX district.
But it is allowed in the I-1 regardless of the use? It's just under that category? It falls within that category?
It is allowed in I-1.
My other question is, what is the average height of the buildings that are in this area?
The average height? We did look at the height, the general height distribution of the buildings in that area. And if you look to the west of Fluor Drive, everything is within the range of two stories to four stories. I think we, the closest that we found that was probably similar in scale would be the Park Avenue Apartments, which are on the other side of Fluor, a little to the south, Fluor and Park Avenue. That is about 11 stories high.
I think that was 110 feet tall, so the condo tower?
Yeah.
So, that gives you a sense of scale. But I believe within the more immediate area, most of the buildings, when we looked at the LIDAR, GIS stuff that we have, were all, you know, I want to say 30 feet or, you know, none of them really, they're probably all like half the height. They're probably very similar to the existing building that's there today on their site, which I don't remember off the top of my head. But you probably have that picture.
Has the economic development team been involved with this proposal? Because it seems like this can benefit from relocating somewhere else instead of adding a...
Yeah. I would leave that to the applicant to talk through there.
But from the city perspective?
I'm not aware of any discussions, but...
Any further questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name, address. Sign in on that white sheet when you're done and you have up to 10 minutes.
Pat Shepherd, Civil Engineering Consultants, 2486th Street, Unit 12 in Urbandale. Here tonight on behalf of Iowa Pacific Processors. I want to thank Sri Oshie. I think she did a great job of explaining the project. Iowa Pacific has been at this location since 2008. Been around for, since 1995. They started in 95, you know, packaging steaks to sell to Japan, I believe. And they've expanded that into, do a lot of food service preparation. There's no rendering. They just get a product and then package it in portion size for restaurant and food services. And there was a site plan that was prepared. We submitted a site plan in 2019, just a month or two before the new code came into effect. It was approved in late 2020 and mainly, in part, due to the pandemic and, you know, rising construction costs and never got underway. They've come back here in the last few months, want to get started again. Building, as a different building designer, the previous building had two floors. And I'm not sure how they were going to store all the products within those two floors. But the current building they have now, there are no floors. It's just a rack system. It's an automated storage and retrieval. So, it's a rack system that goes from floor to ceiling. And that rendering that she showed, that's not the actual building. That's just an example of how the system works. So, you can see the machines and lifts inside the building. Like she said, the building was supposed to be 18 feet into the ground. So, we righted the 93. It was 75-foot high and 18 feet into the ground before 93 feet from the bottom floor to the roof, per se. And that's midway between the 110 that we proposed and the 75 that staff recommended initially. So, we came to the compromise at 93. We haven't started on the site plan yet. It'll be primarily like the plan that was approved before. I think that'll streamline the process if they can fit the new building and the, within the footprint and the operation of what we had previously. And the city is, there are four of these lots are city-owned, from the existing building to the street to the west. City-owned property. The city has real estate. They've been very helpful. They're very instrumental in getting to the point of the first site plan. Ryan Moffett did a lot of work on that. The city has talked with the applicant here within the last month about buying those properties. There's been talks about making a new production facility to go along with the new cold storage and even perpetuating some city lots on the north side of Sunset for a new parking lot when that occurs. So, I think they'd like them to stay in the neighborhood. They said they've been there since 2008, been in business since 95. The trail on the south side, this section is a little wider than most. It's 130 feet. Usually, you get an abandoned railroad or roadway and it's 100 feet. This one's 130. And the trail is only about 30 feet from that south side. If you recall in that trail picture, there's hardly any buffering or tree on that trail several times a month. And you can look right in the back of all these buildings on the south side. And you can hardly see the buildings on the north. So, even if that 25-foot lease area for the drive, the fire access, we go around the backside, there's still be about 70 feet to the trail. Only 30 feet on the other side with not much of a buffer on the south side. So, I think that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have one question. Will the installation of the new fire access road there along...
Will the installation of the new fire access road there along the south require cutting down those trees?
Most of what you see there is it can be. I think there's very few large trees within that 25-foot strip. We did our tree mitigation plan as part of the previous site plan. We'll look at that again when we go through the next round of site plan.
Is it possible to go back to the site plan, or?
Yeah.
So just wondering, you know, I guess the building is pretty big and takes up most of the site. You know, I think maybe some of the concern is it's 93 feet tall. Didn't know if there was a way to spread it out a little bit more, but it looks like you're taking up most of the property. And, and from that cut section, it looks like this is just 100% storage racks, top to bottom?
Correct. Yeah, the section was just an example, that wasn't this.
Yeah.
This design, yeah, it's, it's designed to be more efficient, because it goes straight up and just had racks on top.
But that is an interesting point. I mean, is your, is your need for volume or the height? I mean, if you had two 45-foot buildings, like, over to the west, does that answer your mail? Or why is, I guess, I hear what you're saying about the bike path, but if I'm in Jasper Winery looking south, I got a big old massive white box that's just sitting there, right? That's six stories tall. Jasper Winery is just here north, and you hang out on the, I'm sorry, yep. So while I get from the south, my look angle isn't bad, right? Because you're downhill from everything. Come back the other way, it's sort of odd, isn't it?
I don't, there's a fair distance to Jasper Winery from here, so I imagine there's quite a few trees in between those two properties. It's like two, like three, three, four blocks away.
I guess we're back into, what is a reasonable distance, aren't we? I mean...
I don't, I don't find parking here on a Thursday night and walk to Jasper Winery, but sometimes you go and it's getting pretty close.
Well, sometimes Jasper Winery, I try and head to your driveway, doesn't matter. However, okay, but you, you get my point. I guess my question is, to his point, is there, there's no other way to figure this?
There's no footprint, you put two 45, it's, like I said, that, you know, future plans or maybe would be for a new production facility on the city-owned lots west of the current facility.
And by west, you're meaning north, or west is like that big lot to the west?
West, those four lots are city-owned lots.
Oh, I thought the yellow box was around them, so those aren't yours yet?
No, there's an agreement that once the site plan is approved, there wasn't, the previous site plan, I think once the construction started, or once the permit was taken out on this building, they could purchase those four lots. And real estate's had conversations with the applicant just within the last month about building on those lots, and then there's two parcels to the north that they would like the applicant to purchase for additional parking when the time comes.
To be clear in my position, I'm aggressively in favor of this type of a business, this type of, this use, this type of industry, this type of thing. I think we do need it more local. I think there's massive, massive opportunities for us being local. I guess I share Johnny's curiosity, is, is it really the right place within the city, given the height of it, right? Because I think the other thing we do have, we have a cement construction at the bottom end of Waterworks Park, which is 10 to 12 stories. So, I mean, we have other tall things, but I mean, you know, is there a better way to lay this out? I guess if really what you're looking at in cold storage is a volume problem, not a height problem, you know, if you, if you're expanding your footprint, do not achieve the same business function, so.
We can't expand the footprint. We're wedged in there right now between the existing building and the drive they have to go around on the east side.
Okay. If you have the answer, you have the answer. I'm just saying, my, my concern is, it does seem pretty friggin' tall.
Well, that's why, that's why it is so tall, because our footprint is limited. We can't go out, so we have to go up.
Okay.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you. Please do sign in if you didn't on your way up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone neutral or opposed? Please come forward, state your name, address, sign in when you're done, and you have up to five minutes.
My name is John Lictai, I'm at 4,000 Walcott Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. I am the owner of the business across the street from the six-story building that's going to go up. I would say that when I came into the meeting, I was probably neutral. I think I'm more against at this point. It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. We've been down there since the floods of 93. We've been in business since 1971. We've been in that building since 1997. Obviously, the character of the neighborhood was a lot different prior to 93. There were homes, it was residential, it was actually a really rundown area. City has done a really good job of, of keeping that area from going into blight, and I would say that our business is one of the reasons for that. We have a very well-maintained property. Our building is one story, and the rest of the street is one story as well. I would encourage you to consider, yes, how close you are to Jasper Winery, how close you are to a bike path. There's a lot of recreation that happens in this area. Waterworks Park is right up the street. How many millions of dollars have we spent to keep that in the condition it is? Graves Lake is just down the street from this. So while I'm not against my neighbor expanding his business, I want to see expansion in the neighborhood as well. I want more buildings. The height concerns me, as the front-facing of our building is going to stare at a 100-foot building. That's not exactly exciting for me. With that said, I, I don't want to prevent the expansion, I'm just concerned about the height. They're going to be basically right along the street, because they really are shoehorning something into this facility or into that, that property. So it just feels like more property is needed. Can we work a deal out with the city to buy that land so that they can go out instead of up? I don't know. I would also question, what's the traffic flow going to look like down there? On a day-to-day basis, right now, that neighborhood is plagued with trucks blocking the street. Right now, there are trucks that are staged in the street. They're all put away at the night, they're, they're good neighbors, I get it, they have a business to run, and that's not illegal to do. I just worry that the gravel parking lot that's being utilized right now to stage trucks is now going to end up in the street, or what's the solution for that? And maybe that's more of a question for the applicant than it is a complaint. But those are my two main concerns. I don't want to stare at a six-foot, you know, a six-story building, and I don't think that the rest of the neighborhood should have to do that either. And with the recreation in the area, I think you're pushing people away from that area as opposed to welcoming them in. We'd love to see more Jasper wineries down there, mixed-use business, not just warehousing, not six-story buildings. And really, what's that traffic pattern? What, what kind of, you know, what concerns do we have there for our, for getting rid of the parking lot that they're using right now? Where are all those stagings going to go? Because right now, they use the gravel parking lot, but they also are just staging trucks in the street. So what's, what's going to give? So, thank you guys for your consideration.
Thank you. Applicant, you do have five minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to address the height, traffic, parking logistics concerns?
The road that wraps, or the drive that wraps around the south side, that would be the loading zone, or the loading road, also loading and fire. So on the previous site plan, the docks were positioned about halfway back on the east side of the building. So they'd come around the south side, pull towards Sunset and back up to the dock as to minimize any maneuvering activity that would take place on Sunset Road. And we just, in February, we had a site plan approved for a 62-foot, or 62-stall lot, just to the east of his building. That should eliminate all the employee parking that it's on the car, on the street right now.
I'm sorry, where?
Just to the east of...
See the building to the north of the site there, the big white building? So the parking lot project is to the right or to the east of that, correct? Is that what we're saying?
So the Commenters Building is right across the street to the north, right?
Yes.
And so just to the east of that, which is two Des Moines lots, those are being identified as going to be the parking lot?
Um, the, the, those lot, that lot is owned by the applicant, but what we're hearing is there's an, you, you have an approved site plan for a parking lot there?
Correct. That, that parking lot was shown on the original site plan, but since the parking lot was allowed in the EX district, it didn't have to be rezoned.
Right.
So we broke it into two projects, proceeded with the parking lot site plan to the north.
Is there any way to show, like, something better that shows what they own? Because I thought we're talking about the one that says EX across the street? We're talking about the one that says EX just east of their property? Because I thought that's where the building is going, and we have the commenter across...
You can use the mouse, too.
Do you want me to open it?
I don't know who owns what.
We're going to pull up GIS, so you can see it a little easier. Maybe drive for him, Shiroshi. No.
So you own that?
Yes, I own these, there's two lots that they own.
If you zoom in closer, the ownership will pop up.
Yeah, there's one lot, we own the one just to the east of where it's pointing right now.
Right. So the previous speaker owns the lot with the building that you're seeing right now?
This is his building, or the approved site plan.
And Jan Miller is you guys as well? Is that what was?
No, I own the, I own the building that's the driveway there.
Right here, he's right here.
Not that one, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's different than I understood, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's not what...
Okay, I, I thought you were there.
Okay, in any case, 2605 and 2607 are owned by the applicant and have been approved for a parking lot? Is that correct?
Correct.
So we haven't heard anything from the building that's next to the right, next to your new parking lot? Or who's as that now? I guess, Lynn? Nope, out.
You just need to pull it down.
We haven't heard anything from them.
No, we've, like Shiroshi said, there was, we've got no comment cards, we've had no phone calls. They had a neighborhood meeting, nobody came to, so all, this is the only feedback that we've gotten.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing then and open it up for discussion and motions, please.
I have a lot of concerns with the height of this building, and I have a lot of concerns with the staff report not referencing the character of the neighborhood in a way that we would reference that everywhere else. If it was a residential neighborhood, this would never be allowed. So I don't understand why we're holding this to a different standard. I am not opposed to the operation, to, to the business. I would like to see them expand horizontally. It sounds like the city owns four of the lots to the west of this property, so there, there could be a solution for that horizontal expansion, for this business to continue to be in this location. But to put a 93-story, 93-foot structure with nothing similar to it, I, I cannot support that.
Because I have a similar, if we're talking about two pieces, because tonight is just zoning, right? And the zoning portion of this would be probably necessary to bring this business within the conformance if we want the business to continue operating. But my understanding is, if we approve zoning tonight, that the height would still have to come back and be discussed as far as a site plan. Is that right?
Yes, but if it's rezoned to I-1, then...
75 feet and then up to 110?
Right. So you need to recommend, if, if you don't want it to be 70, even 75 feet, you need to have a zoning condition that limits it even more so. So if you want to make that recommendation to council, then...
So if you approved the zoning of I-1, yet identify that the height must be appropriate for EX?
Right.
Changing to a higher, so say, we're doing EX for operations plus height restriction?
Yeah.
That doesn't prevent the operation, doesn't prevent the expansion, but it would require further public insight on the building going up? So we still are able to progress? We're still able to operate now in compliance? But we don't end up with a 93-foot-tall building without a further review?
Right, you could change condition three to say, "Any future building or building addition shall not exceed the height permitted in the EX district."
And it doesn't mean that it can't be changed later? It would just make sure we still progress forward, we can still plan, but the site plan would have to come back and take a look?
As long as you don't specify a number and just limit it to what would be permitted in the EX district, then that would allow some flexibility.
Then I'd love to make that motion.
I've got a quick question, Jason or Shiroshi. You said there was a previous plan that showed an 18-foot-deep basement, and that was some of the justification for allowing the additional 18 feet? Do you have a copy of that plan?
No, that, that was, well, I don't know if you have the building plans. The site plan just shows the footprint, but I understand, you know, through discussions, they were anticipating building a basement.
Okay, yeah, just curious, an 18-foot basement isn't typical of a storage warehouse, so, that's all. And I'm, I'm for the project, I think it's good for business. Again, I do have a little bit of concern with, with the height, but I think I can live with it in the, in the name of progress and jobs.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to move staff with a change of recommendation C to be, to allow the height to be as stated for an EX district?
Yeah, I would write it, "Any future building or building addition shall not exceed that permitted in the EX district for the related building type."
Thank you. I was struggling with the phrase.
Just to make sure that the height maximum EX is, is that 30, or what?
75.
But, no, the, so the, the height max in EX would be three stories, and if you take in our code, it, there's like, the ground floor can be this tall, and the other floors can be this tall above it. If you add that all together, that would equate to 48 feet.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
And...
That's your full authorization, you can do without review, is 48 feet?
Without a type 1, yes.
And with a type 1?
With the type 1, you could, we can increase or decrease anything by 50%, anything beyond that has come here.
Even with the zoning conditions stating that it has to comply with the EX height?
They're allowed to administratively, in a type 1, give 50% above.
I understand that, I'm asking with the condition...
Given the discussion, we're not going to, I mean, I thought when I heard Chris discuss and ask how to put together a motion, he didn't, he was looking for some flexibility. He didn't want to set a number. He wanted the process to continue on, but wanted clear expectations. So that's the value of saying that? I mean, I, you just have to trust staff that we're not going to go approve a 50% increase after, you know, through the discussion.
Yeah, so I mean, we're basically saying that we're not going to be going over 45 essentially without seeing this thing again, or 48 without seeing this thing again?
Yeah.
No, we're saying that they, because if they can do a type 1, then they can go up to 72, and we don't see a type 1.
Right, but we don't have to issue a type 1 just because somebody asks, so I think it's, I think... Yeah, you could put it in the motion that any variation from the, the standard would require commission review.
Ooh, I like that better. Ooh, I like that better.
Okay.
I would like it legal. With the condition that it has to not exceed the EX set upon as a recommendation, does the type one still apply?
So I think, and I think that's a reasonable condition, I think that'd be the route, if you want to make sure that that review does come before, I mean, obviously it gives, as Jason stated, the flexibility to approve it as a type one, but it seems like if it goes even above that 48 feet, it'll be, you guys will be seeing it, so, but that can put it in stone that it would come to this body if you did want to limit it to that 48 feet, so, I think that's definitely a, that's an allowable condition on the rezoning here.
Would it be okay to have the lawyer summarize the intended motion to make sure we get it right?
So from my recollection, the intended motion is to amend the staff recommendation, I think it's C or three Cs.
Can we scroll the...
And where that, or C3, yes. Excuse me, any future building or building addition shall not exceed the 48 feet, just, I can think of some language on the spot here, but allowable up to that 48 feet, if we do that, that would limit it, so I can put some...
Do we, I guess...
I'm just trying to think on the fly here, as far as language, it's going to be allowing that type one review if it does exceed that 48 feet, that would be, I think, my recommended language.
So you would prefer...
Or type two, type two review.
You would prefer that we actually specify a number, because I, as I had written them, or written, noted, or was thinking through the condition, I was thinking that would be, any future building or building addition shall comply with the height limitations of the EX district, any requested design alternative shall be considered by the planning zoning commission, that type one design alternative is not available, you know, that...
I'd be happy with that.
That's agree, that's agreeable language to me, that sounds fine.
Thank you for the collaboration. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Are there any committee or director's reports this evening?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.